I’d like to call this meeting of the committee of the whole to order and ask that you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Klemsky.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Nudaro.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Conquest.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Beremis.
She stepped out.
Doiter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent at roll call.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Clerk Tamer, did anyone sign in for public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. And I think I can safely say there’s no one else here for public comment. We’ll move on to item three, business before the committee review of the fiscal year 2023 budget. City Manager, I have a note about December 5th. Is that something you’re going to announce?
Yes.
All right. I’ll turn it to you. Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you. So, one housekeeping item before we move on. Christina and I talked, and we are going to publish for the public hearing for the budget to be December 5th. We hold the public hearing. Doesn’t mean that the council is obligated to approve the budget that night, but we need to establish that, and we have certain timelines to meet that. So, now we’d like to move on to the public works portion of the budget. You notice that we did rearrange a few things from the original schedule. We had Stan and his team plan to be here tonight for committee, and so we thought we would keep that so that Corey, Kent, and Paul could be here. And I also want to introduce behind me Larry Kravitz, who is our new IT Director. I think everyone’s had an opportunity to meet him, but if you haven’t, we’re super happy to have him here. Not sure why he’s here tonight because his budget’s not up, but shows good dedication.
Wants to see how it’s done.
So, with that, I will turn the microphone over to Public Works Director Stan Belicky.
All right. And you’ll see we’ve, Clerk Tamer and I have incorporated page numbers for you in our new agenda, so page two dash, section two, page 43.
Yes, thank you.
Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It’s my pleasure tonight to present the proposed public works budget for 2023. Tonight, I’ll touch on highlights from this year and outline the department’s major focus moving forward into next year. The Public Works Department is charged with maintaining the physical assets of the city, including 160 miles of streets, public buildings and grounds such as City Hall, Public Works, the Police Department, Fire Department, parking decks, 7,000 streetlights, and 25 traffic signals, 23,000 parkway trees, the production and distribution of clean, safe drinking water through 175 miles of water main, collection and treatment of wastewater through 148 miles of sanitary sewer, and the water reclamation facility, stormwater management, solid waste collection, recycling, engineering services, and fleet management. So what I’ll do is I’ll go through some of the different sections of the public works budget for 2023. In street and bridge administration, the kind of the main administration account for public works, that starts on page 2-43 in the budget. There are a couple of things that are notable. In 2022, the city began the process of studying traffic on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. Work on this project is ongoing, and results from this pilot study are expected in early 2023. Funds in this cost center are proposed in 2023 for this work to begin in other neighborhoods as well. Another item in this cost center, consulting services that were related to plan review of new homes and commercial developments were proposed to increase by $20,000 to reflect the trend of the last several years. Funds will be spent in response to new development and will correspondingly decline should permit reviews decrease. Another item that really isn’t a significant budget impact, but was something that the department initiated this year, was the establishment of a public works citizens academy to enhance our residents’ understanding and awareness of public works and the value added to the community. Over a five-week session last spring, 22 people graduated from that inaugural academy, and we plan to continue that into the future. In our street maintenance cost center on page 2-45, our street maintenance division once again supported a lot of the activities in the downtown area, installing the jersey barriers in the downtown to support the creation of outdoor dining spaces. Increased sidewalk cleaning operations were performed every other week during the months when outdoor dining was in place, and routine maintenance such as street sweeping, patching, crack filling, and sign repairs were also completed. This division also striped major roadways that were paved within the last five to seven years or where striping is deteriorating and in need of maintenance. One of these areas was completed striping of York Street, including York at the Prairie Path Crossing, Addison Avenue, and several other streets in the downtown area during overnight hours with grooved epoxy striping material, which is something that in our climate, we found tends to last a little bit longer. It is a little bit more tolerant of our snow plowing. A couple of cost-related items in this area that are notable are some cost increases in barricade rental for special events in particular due to public safety concerns in kind of hardening those areas and making it a higher level of safety for those events to occur. Also in 2023, there was proposed funding in this cost center in the amount of $655,000 to line three main storm sewer inlet lines to the Utley and McKinley Storm Sewer Stations. We are also seeing commodity increases in our striping program, street sign materials, and our roadway program, in particular asphalt and paving work in specific, on average of about 15% increases over last year. In the forestry area, which begins on page 2-50, forestry division continues to maintain the urban forest, and although financial uncertainty has delayed tree planting in 2021, the proposed budget includes concluding a two-year catch-up plan with increased tree planting again in 2023. The forestry division planted over 950 trees this year, and the proposed 2023 budget accounts for the supply and planting of another 950 trees, about one and a half times a normal year. Tree planting is expected to return to a normal planting schedule in 2024. The forestry division also began a parkway tree inventory this year, which will conclude in 2023 and will be integrated with the city’s GIS system. The city received its 42nd consecutive Tree City USA Award, USA Award, pardon me, which is one of the longest-running in the state. A couple of notable statistics with respect to forestry, we tend to touch on these every year. Our elm tree population in 2004, we had 2,813 elm trees in our parkway tree population, and as of this year, we are down to about 1,169 that are remaining. And our ash tree population also continues to decline, in this case, more by design than anything else. Our 2009 ash tree population was about 2,300, and as of this year, we have about 354 public parkway ash trees remaining, which is about 15% of that total from 2009. In our electrical group on page 2-53, in addition to the routine maintenance of all streetlights and traffic signals, the electrical division completed several larger maintenance projects and system upgrades. Thirty-six deteriorated steel or concrete light, streetlight poles were replaced, and this is part of a multi-year project to replace all steel poles with aluminum poles, which are more resistant to corrosion. Traffic signal controllers were also replaced at six intersections as part of a three-year program to replace and upgrade aging and obsolete controllers. This division also continued to work on a multi-year plan to convert streetlight fixtures to LED. By the end of 2022, the city will have converted about 2,600 of its approximately 7,000 streetlights. About 1,500 have been completed this year, and another 2,000 are targeted for conversion in 2023, with the plan to finish all conversions by the end of 2024. Areas are targeted based on the difficulty of servicing, circuiting in the area, reliability, age, and energy savings. Changes are reported to ComEd so that the city billing can be updated, as the LED light sources provide energy savings of up to about 75% over the current fixtures. And again, a couple of notable cost drivers in this area. For 2023, we’re seeing commodity increases for underground cable as well as concrete and aluminum light poles. The cost of concrete poles is up approximately 18% over last year, and the cost of aluminum poles has increased anywhere from 25 to 100%, depending on the type of the pole that’s Additionally, proposed work for next year includes $220,000 to begin a five-year, $1 million plan to upgrade the city’s 300 street lighting controllers, many of which are more than 40 years old. Aging components and arc flash hazards create reliability and safety concerns that will be addressed by providing service disconnects over current protection and updated internal With respect to facilities and building maintenance, which can be found on page 2-58, our facilities group continues to host quarterly electronic recycling events at the Public Works Garage. They’ve completed routine building maintenance, elevator maintenance, and are caring for HVAC systems in our facilities. This year in particular, in 2022, the group provided contract administration for the Public Works Facility painting project. And next year, will include routine maintenance and upgrades to the HVAC system at Public Works, as well as a switchgear replacement also at the Public Works Facility. The Public Works Garage was completed in 1999 and is now 23 years old, and the repairs that are budgeted are typical for a facility of this age. Phase three of the Public Works Garage, which is essentially the land to the south of the garage, is proposed to begin in 2023 with $60,000 budgeted for demolition of existing structures on the expansion site. This will enable the city to expand as well as consolidate material storage and public works facility needs over the course of the next three years. It will remove items from the site of the water reclamation facility to allow for future expansion for controlling for phosphorus or other EPA treatment requirements. With respect to our fleet and central equipment maintenance group, that’s found on page 2022 has been an especially unpredictable and challenging year in the automotive market that has been characterized by supply chain issues, lack of materials and parts, uncertain ordering windows, and long lead times for delivery of vehicles. Staff has made every attempt to stay ahead of the uncertainty and has done a great deal of research into purchasing options, refurbishing vehicles, and deferring vehicle purchases where possible. Vehicles and equipment that could be deferred a year or two until the market hopefully stabilizes have been. Alternative fuels are evaluated for each vehicle and piece of equipment, and our goal to lessen our environmental impact has not been driven by a specific alternative fuel source, but rather by using the best pool of alternative fuel technologies in the right applications for our operational needs. Of the 30 vehicles that were ordered this year, they include five hybrid electric vehicles, three propane vehicles, seven biodiesel vehicles, and one electric. Many police, fire, and public works vehicles were recommended for approval in 2022 to secure a spot in the manufacturer’s ordering queue, anticipating delivery in 2023, or in some cases even 2024. We expect unstable conditions in this area to continue through the coming year. Within the operations of this, of our fleet group, the budget, the proposed budget does also include the removal of one medium-duty lift at the Public Works Garage and replacing it with a 75,000-pound-capacity mobile column lift system. A couple of other notable cost increases in this area are for fuel. The budget for gasoline for 2023 is increasing by $205,000, and diesel is increasing by $75,000, despite the consumption of fuel by the city fleet remaining steady. Cost increases for parts and tires have increased by approximately 20% over last year, or approaching almost $100,000 within the budget for next year. The city has been able to mitigate some of its fuel spend due to its increased use of alternative fuels and propane in particular. In 2022, the savings that is due to the use of propane in our fleet is approximately $16,000, or about $1.26 a gallon in our fuel mix. Replacement of the city’s Fuel Island is on the horizon, expected to begin work on that in 2023. That work may be coordinated with phase three of the Public Works Garage, depending on the condition and timing of some other things with respect to that project as well. I would also like to touch on a few other cost centers that are specific to public works. The Public Benefit Program on page 2-64, continuing in 2023, also contains, again, contains $50,000 for the potential for a new sidewalk application should one be presented through the city’s policy that exists for new sidewalk construction. There are also dollars that have been proposed next year for the levee maintenance project that is, I think, a new item that’s popped up since last year. There’s $40,000 that are proposed for maintenance, including joint sealant replacement in that levee, brush removal, general work that’s needed. I think the last time that anything was really substantially done in that area was probably 10-plus years ago, so it’s time to do some work in that area to keep that levee secure and making sure that it’s doing what we expect it to do. 2023 also includes $220,000 for engineering for the Route 83 pedestrian and bicycle bridge improvements. That work is ongoing, and construction of that project is expected in 2025. The total project cost on that is approximately $3.4 million, with right now about $2.4 million of that being secured in grant funding. In the MFT Fund on page 3-17, the city’s MFT Fund has seen an influx of approximately $3 million in Rebuild Illinois funds that has been used for a variety of projects. There were two projects in particular this year in 2022 that were completed with the use of some of those Rebuild Illinois dollars. The first was the Van Buren and Crescent Street Reconstruction Project. That was approximately $1.52 million completed this year. And another project that also used those dollars was the First Street Bridge Deck replacement. That was about a $210,000 project that was done. Proposed for 2023 is the Brush Hill Road, roadway project in the amount of about $1.35 million. And then, this also includes $200,000 next year for engineering of the Park Avenue Bridge Deck replacement project, and construction of that is anticipated in 2024. Also notable for 2023 is a proposal for $200,000 for the Villa Avenue Street resurfacing project. This $200,000 would be specific to engineering. Again, construction in that project is expected in 2025, and that is a joint effort with the Village of Villa Park. They are the ones leading that project, and they’ve secured some federal surface transportation dollars for the construction of that, and so the city is working with them to make that happen within the next couple of years. Couple of other infrastructure projects that I would just like to touch on. On page 5-11, in the North York TIFF, there are a couple of things that are notable. The North York sidewalk improvements. There is $2 million that is in the future, proposed in 2024. About $1.53 million of that total is in grant funding, and work next year is going to involve a small amount of land acquisition that is needed as part of that construction Also in the North York area, the road, we have roadway improvements that are planned for next year. That project is budgeted at $3.52 million, and we have $2.8 million of that secured in grant dollars. That project is going to run from Crestview to Grand Avenue, includes resurfacing as well as spot curb and gutter and sidewalk replacement, striping, as well as the inclusion of the North York Plan improvements where it is feasible. So, staff expects that project to be bid in January 2023 with construction to follow next year. Couple of things that are notable in stormwater on page 5-29. This year, the city completed the Southeast Elmhurst Stormwater Mitigation Project in cooperation with School District 205. That project was completed at a cost of approximately $424,000. The project added approximately three feet, excuse me, three acre feet of detention and provides flood protection to nine additional homes in the city. And I think it’s notable, we kind of touch on this every year, that since 2015, the city has completed 14 stormwater projects that have reduced or eliminated flooding for 475 homes by creating 132 acre feet of stormwater storage across the city. Last, but certainly not least, within the municipal utility fund, that begins on 4-1. A few of the accomplishments from this year within the municipal utility fund is the completion of the Utley Storm Station Rehabilitation Project. That project was a little over $3 million, and that station is looking like new since that work was done. As the other work that has been done with respect to the, to our stormwater station projects is the bid of the McKinley Stormwater Station, and that is another example of where we are seeing some significant cost increases. I think as of last year, that project was budgeted at approximately $3.2 million, and the low bid for that project that came in this year was $5.1 million. The other thing that we’re seeing on this project that is very reminiscent of some of the things that we’re seeing with fleet is extremely long lead times for critical components. We have some information from Commonwealth Edison that there’s Transformer that we need for that project, and the lead time on that is going to be, it’s very significant, probably possibly a year or longer to get that transformer. So, and that’s just one element of that project. So, definitely something that is kind of a theme through several areas within the public works budget. Also within the municipal utility fund for this year, there has been continued construction of the Bundle Four improvements at the water reclamation facility. That project is in the process of rehabilitating our anaerobic digester systems, updating our sludge-holding facility, and finishing the rehabilitation of Building Two. The construction of Bundle Four is about $8.1 million. A few other projects that were completed this year were the Lake and Walnut Force Main replacement project. We had some repairs to the Randolph and West Stormwater Pumping Station project as well that were needed to be done. A few other items that were completed this year within the scope of the municipal utility operation is that the city started a GPS project to collect asset attributes and location data for the city’s stormwater collection system throughout the city, so that will be a really important piece of information to add to our GIS system going forward. And there have been conversations with the Public Works and Buildings Committee on the new lead service line replacement requirements and where that might lead in the future. So for next year, in 2023, within the municipal utility fund, we expect to complete Bundle Four at the water reclamation facility, and also expect to begin construction on Bundle Five improvements at that facility as well. Bundle Five is expected to be a three-year project that is going to start next year and complete in December of 2025. This is again a project that, because of the world that we live in right now, has seen substantial cost increases. That project was estimated to be about a $15 million project even within the last year or so, and right now, the best estimate that we have on that is approximately $25 million. So that’s a substantial increase. That project includes rehabilitation of primary and secondary clarifiers at the facility, disinfection equipment, as well as the non-potable water system at the treatment plant. Few other noteworthy items that are planned projects for next year include bidding and administering the South and West Elevated Tank Rehabilitation Projects and completing a replacement of the atrium force main in the amount of $3 million. So that is an overview of the Public Works Department, not only of major initiatives this year as well as for 2023, and with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. City Manager, is your intent to go through these letter by letter?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
All right. So, thank you, Director, for the overview. We will go with, start with, these are all public works lines, of course. We’ll start with the administration on 2-43. Open up to the council for any questions. Alderman Doiter.
Thank you. Stan, I think you said on this 2-43 was the traffic study information?
Correct.
What line is that?
Let’s see. I believe that is in the 3026 line. That’s correct. 3026.
3026. So, under engineering?
Correct.
Okay, great. So the same amount for 2023 that we have for this year, is that right?
That is, that’s accurate, yes.
Okay. And not all of, the traffic study is just a portion of that amount, is that right?
That’s, that’s correct.
Okay. Would you expect we’re doing one neighborhood next year as we are this year, or is there the potential the potential to increase the number of neighborhood studies?
I think there is a potential to, we were kind of thinking between one and two, there would be some variables that we would take a look at. You know, going through the process this year for the first time, I think we're still getting a feel for kind of how big of an area, you know, kind of we can handle and what's reasonable. So that may also kind of be a factor in terms of, there's, there's some, there's an element of kind of, just geographically, how large in terms of the number of residents and homes might be involved in that, as well as just the network, the roadway network, and where it might make sense kind of functionally to cut off, you know, looking at a particular area. So we'll take a closer look at that as we get into next year, but I would say it would not be more than two areas.
Okay, that's great. We're excited to see those results when they come out, or the recommendations, findings of that study. And thanks for coming to our board meeting on Thursday to talk about that and some other Public Works things. We're happy to have you at our board meeting on Thursday.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Talludo.
Thanks. I'll just piggyback on Alderman Deuter's topic. How do, how do, can you hear me better? How do you set what neighborhoods get that focus?
So when we started this process and looked for where to start this pilot project, we took a look at things like vehicle crash rates, worked with the police department to kind of really, they see a lot of those kind of anecdotal, you know, reports of where they're getting asked to send traffic detail, as well as the kind of the numbers of where vehicle accidents are occurring. So we kind of, we kind of looked at to those things as a guide for where to start. So I think going forward, we would continue to work with them and kind of have that be a pretty strong indicator of where maybe there is the strongest, I guess, priority to start or to go next. And I don't know what those are at this point, but that was a big factor in kind of where we started this year, and I would see that continuing to be the case, barring some other information of the contrary.
And just a follow-up, like, pardon my ignorance, but what neighborhood are you currently studying for the pilot?
We are looking at the College View neighborhood, basically from west to York and then from the tracks down to St. Charles.
Thank you.
Other questions? Discussion on Administration. All right, we'll move on to Street Maintenance on page 45. Alderman Mulliner.
Just a couple of questions. One on the barricades. I'm assuming that we're, we can reduce a little bit of the rental on those based on timing, like the parade, maybe we don't need as many because of the fact that we won't have any barricades being used in downtown for the, so certain times during the year there's not going to, there's going to be barricades available, I'm assuming. So as an example, we're going to do outdoor dining, and we're looking at May, and when you're looking at the Fourth, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, do you have to rent more barricades for that parade because, once you have barricades available?
You're saying just because of the day that it's occurring?
Yeah. Or are those different types of barricades?
I'm going to ask maybe Cory to jump in when she can answer that.
So in theory, you would think that you could have reduced rental costs because there's barricades available, they're all stacked beautifully at the Public Works Garage right now. It becomes more of a timing issue. So St. Patrick's Day, sometimes it's snowy, so my team is out doing snow removal and winter operations, so they don't have time to place everything and fill it all because they're doing other things. So.
So part of it is the placement of the barricades?
Right, exactly. So they have to go out there, they have to be filled, and they have to be picked back up.
Okay.
Maybe, but that doesn't.
Okay. Second question that relates to streets, maintenance slash repair, new streets, et cetera. As we're doing streets, as we look toward the next year and we're doing replacement of a street, and I know that doesn't really fall under maintenance per se, but as we're doing a replacement, can we kind of look a little bit closer at where feeders are to the public schools and try to get some of those streets done earlier? As an example, Van Buren was one of the last streets that we did this year, and Van Buren was tied up for almost an entire month of the first week of, for the first month of school, and kids were trying to figure out how to navigate that. If there's a way that we could coordinate that a little bit, it would be helpful.
I think we certainly can. And one thing that I didn't mention in my opening comments but was absolutely a factor this year was the labor, labor situation that we faced, and that did cause delays on city projects, in particular roadways. So that labor issue in particular has been settled, I think, for a period of, the contract that was entered was several years long, so I don't anticipate that being an issue again, but we will certainly be mindful of that, and if there's anything that we can do to control that, to make sure that it's not a hindrance to the schools, we certainly will.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Jensen.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to, excuse me, sorry, I've been under the weather, but I would like to add a circle back item on safety. The Public Works Committee has been working on items to increase the safety of children walking to school to Conrad Fisher and Churchville. Over the course of, you know, nearly dozen meetings, they've been considering a plan to add a limited number of new sidewalks where necessary to allow students safe transit. You know, they haven't finalized a report, no conclusions have been drawn, but, you know, I would like the staff to suggest ways to fund this important safety project in 2023, should the committee adopt the report and the city council approve it.
Alderman Plumsky.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add a little bit to that. So just taking a look at what we have proposed, this, so the items Alderman Jensen brought up, if it's potentially sidewalks, not just generally if people want them, but it's more of a safety reason, they would be classified, if you're looking at CEB page 13, as a Class Four, Expenditure Priority C. And there are six items already in the budget that fall within that class. So just saying that we are seeing some items that are at that same level. So I support the request for a circle back. Thank you.
Alderman Dunn.
My question pertains to vehicle purchases, so looking at the approvals in Public Works Committee and Council, I think we approved a lot of vehicles. You indicated you tried to defer as many as possible, one or two years. And I, with the CEB, for 2023, it looks like we're high this year for public, well, at least Public Works vehicles, and then it drops next year. So I, can you quantify the, what went on there, what, maybe how many are deferred versus the ones we absolutely need to buy next year? Is there any, can you shed some light on that?
Sure, I can, and I'd be happy, I have a breakdown of vehicles that have kind of fit that criteria of being deferred at least a year or two. But to answer your question, in particular, we have a number of engineering vehicles that are in that category of deferrals, vehicles E7, E15, and 18, deferring replacement of E1 and E12. A lot of those were anticipated to be like a Ford Escape Hybrid or similar vehicle. And so one of the things that we've, we've taken a look at is if it's really not mission critical, if there's something that can wait like those, we feel like those can wait a little bit longer to be replaced. They are being pushed off into the future. A few others that we have on this list for deferral were PW78, PW110, and PW129, as well as PW70 and 71. So a few of those are kind of medium-duty dump trucks. We have a street sweeper in there, which is basically, it's kind of a backup street sweeper for the city. So I'd be happy to provide this, the list that I have to the council, but that is kind of a rundown of the vehicles that are proposed for deferral.
Right. Yeah, that's fine. Just wanted to get a sense for how many were pushed out. So it sounds like 10 to 12.
So Alderman Dunn, you're asking for a list, you just wanted the information that you've got tonight?
Yeah, yeah, I think your answer's fine.
There's 10. To go through that list, there are 10 vehicles that have been deferred.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Thanks.
Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. My question's about line 30-55 on 2-45. Looking at the residential stormwater management programs, I don't think this has to be a circle back, maybe you might just know this, but are those funds that are budgeted for that typically utilized fully, or do we have any unspent funds in that, or is that something that's always pretty much topped out?
Historically, we have spent the, what is budgeted. There's a pretty strong demand for that program.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm back on page 2-45, and the question about barricade rental, is that, this is not budgeted here for outdoor dining, it's budgeted for special events, is that right?
It is the, it is for events such as the St. Patrick's Day Parade, Four on the Fourth, Rock the Block, Turkey Trot, things like that, is not for the outdoor dining.
Okay. And do we pass that cost, is that typically covered by the events, or does it vary by event? Do we recoup some of those costs?
My understanding is that it varies by event, and it's, so it's not entirely uniform, but some events do cover the cost of the barricade rental and some do not.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
All right, well, since barricades is the big topic tonight, I had a little note in mind, is, does it make sense to buy these barricades since we're expanding outdoor cold storage?
I'm going to have to defer to Cory on that.
Barricade specialist.
It's something that could be evaluated. Again, it does come down to timing and Public Works operations and being able to get them all out and place them back up in a timely manner.
I see. Okay. All right. Other questions on this topic?
Mayor, we can add just one comment.
The one comment I would add is just that it's not just the barricade itself, but it's the service coming through and.
That's what I picked up. Yeah, thank you. All right. We're going on to snow removal on page 2-49. Seeing no questions, comments. Alderman Dunn.
Just on the contractual services of snow removal versus our own in-house staff over time, what is that contractual service?
Service.
Is that for the.
3072.
City center?
It's the trucking cost to remove the snow from downtown.
Gotcha, okay. Okay.
All right. On to forestry, 2-50. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you. Stan, you mentioned that we're kind of doing some makeup on tree planting, and I think that's reflected in line 3077. Is, right, that's the line that shows, you know, we're at 150 and then dropping in 2024 down to 105?
It's actually, yeah, there's two, there's two lines, the tree planting line, I am 3077, as well as the, under commodities, line 4061 for trees.
Actually, that was my question, because the tree, it looks like that amount is down in 2023?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Oh, no, no. The commodity line of 40-61 is going from 255,000 down to 180. I would expect that that would stay high if we're still in this makeup period.
So there's been an allocation of some dollars for the tree purchase in the MFT Fund. I think it's 75,000.
So this does not reflect the full purchase that goes, that aligns with the tree planting?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Any other discussion on forestry? Moving on to electrical, 2-53. Alderman Mulliner.
On the electrical part, you're talking about an increase in the underground cable that's damaged by contractors. Is there anything we can do to improve that rate so that we have less damage to it? I know that Julie doesn't usually mark our private lines, but is there anything we can do to make sure that that doesn't happen?
One thing that we would love to do is move away from direct buried cable. That would, that would help, but we do try our hardest through our own locating staff to get out ahead of either our own projects or when we get notified of utility work in an area that we can locate. Those are a couple of things that we do, but long-term, the best thing that we can do is probably move away from the direct buried cable.
Just as a follow-up to that, if it's damaged by a contractor, do we pay or do they reimburse us?
We, we talked about this earlier today, and we try to recover those costs whenever possible. There are some times that isn't possible to happen, and so this is really kind of recognition of some of that and the fact that also the cable costs have gone up. But to answer your question, yes, if we can recover those from a third party, we do work on recovering those costs.
I have a question on page 254, 8016 Traffic Signals. I see the J form, but I'm not sure that that really explained, what is, what are we doing at St. Charles and Berkeley and Addison and First that make up those expenditures? Am I reading the wrong J note?
Yeah, I think, those are, Kent was just reminding me, those are railroad interconnects that are in the budget.
Does the railroad line contribute to those?
I think it's through the, we have grants from the ICC that do contribute to that It's 90% funded from the ICC.
All right. That answers my question. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on electrical? Rubbish disposal, page 57. All right, seeing no questions. Municipal buildings, page 58. Alderman Talludo.
Just wanted to, sorry, wanted a little bit more explanation on the construction of a wellness room and restroom at City Hall for $230,000.
Let me take that one. So the wellness room and restroom improvements at the City Hall were proposed because of, my understanding, there are federal requirements for certain accommodations to be available within public buildings. accommodations to be available within public buildings. And that was kind of the main driving reason why those dollars are proposed in, in this year, this coming year's budget.
To further detail, the restroom improvement is going to be a gender neutral bathroom. And we're trying to figure out where that could possibly be put if we, when we move forward that. And then the wellness room is mostly for nursing mothers. And again, we're looking at that. We have some space on the first floor where Metropolitan Family Services used to be. And so we're kind of looking at that. We did put these numbers in early, and so we're going to refine those before we come to council with any changes like that.
So just a follow-up. So those two things total $230,000. I mean, are we building a brand new bathroom? Or are we repurposing an existing bathroom?
I believe the early plan was to build a new bathroom in between, I believe there's a space between the elevator and the women's restroom on the first floor. And so it was proposed for that area.
And then the wellness room, is that a brand new room? Or is that a repurposing of an existing room? You said there was like a closet or something, maybe?
Yeah. So when this was put together, it was a brand new room. But then, as we talked a little bit more on the staff side, we thought maybe there's a different room that we could use at less cost.
Okay. So this would be a maximum number, maybe, hopefully?
Hopefully.
Just to circle back on the breakdown on the two different, instead of lumping them together. Thank you.
Alderman Dunn, then Alderman Jensen.
Yeah, I just want to expand on that circle back. So that whole J form at the bottom at 259 with the City Hall capital investments, I'd like to have those all be a circle back as investments in a building that, you know, maybe we'd be looking to potentially move out of. So potentially could move those into the next year's budget. But I'd like to kind of talk about those in one bundle and make a decision on those.
Alderman Jensen.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I was just going to ask about the, the dais veneer and if that was necessary to do this year for similar reasons. So can we add that to it as well?
City manager, are these, both of these, the wellness room and the gender neutral bathroom, are these federal requirements?
We'll get that in the circle back as well, just so everybody understands where that came from.
Yeah, as well as what the timing is, are they required to be done in '23? Or can, may they be deferred? Alderman Mulliner.
Just a question. I know for a number of years, we've been talking about cameras on, on the buildings off and on. Is there any discussion about having that happen within the next year or so?
Yes, Alderman, we will get to that in the IT budget.
Sooner the better, I think, right now.
Thank you. Page 2-58, line 60-69, it's property management services. Is that the cost of the management of the properties that the city owns that are rented separately?
Like, is that Addison? Yes, that is for the management services of the commercial building we own on Addison and 180 Park.
Okay. And where, does the revenue from those properties have its own line? Or where, where do we see the revenue from those properties?
So the revenue for the 180 US partners into the capital improvements fund. I believe there are also some expenses associated with that in that fund as well.
Could we get a, could I get a circle back that shows for those properties, the revenue and the expenses? Thank you.
Right. Anything else on municipal buildings? Central management equipment, page 60. I think you covered that in your, oh, Alderman Brennan.
That was covered in the opening, but I'm just sort of curious on the gasoline. You know, if the average is 120,000 gallons annually, in 2022, that would come out to $4 a gallon. Yet we're using 445, I think, for 2023. So I'm, I'm curious. Is, I'm, I'm just a little confused by the, the difference in what's projected for this year and, and what we're supposedly being conservative with for 2023.
So you're looking at the J note on page 262?
It's, no, on 2, yeah, well, that's 262, but the line item's 4019, 260. So I would think that, my question is, I would think that at, at some point, you know, gasoline, I hope, would, would cap out, right? I'd hope it comes back down. So we're planning for an 11% increase year over year, you know, for next year. So that seems a little odd to me, but when I do the math, it makes sense at 445. I mean, I get that, I guess 2022 looks wrong to me as far as the 480.
Do you think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, I think, as we do with a lot of things in the budget, we do err on the conservative side of that. So that's where we're seeing a trend. And that's the number that we plugged into the budget to.
But this would imply that in 2022, we're doing less than 120,000 gallons. That's.
So right now, we pay like $3.53, or at least when we were running these reports for gas. So then if you multiply that by the 120,000 that we're predicting we're going to use, that's 423,600. So it's a little up. We never know exactly how much we're going to use, you know?
Okay. So, so 2023 is just conservative then? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on central maintenance? All right. Public benefits, page 64. Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at 8034, I'm going to assume that 50,000 was been budgeted for that in years previous. But I'd, you request a circle back here to find out when this, when these funds were last spent in prior years, going back, I don't know, maybe, I think the policy had changed sometime in the last 15 years to replace the policy. I don't remember exactly when, maybe back to that change or a few years prior. But what I'm trying to get a sense of is when the last time these sidewalk improvement funds were used for a sidewalk. So however far we back, we have to go to get to that, you know? If you appreciate a circle back.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on public improvements? Excuse me, public benefits. Moving on to the motor fuel tax fund on section three, page 17. Questions, discussion? I have one. Do we have a fund, does it make sense? Or do we have a fund balance policy on this particular fund? I mean, I see it's been as high as 2 million, and we're going down to, you know, 40, 50, 60,000?
So I don't believe we have a specific policy on this fund. It's governed by state statutes, what the dollar amounts can be spent for. And so typically, we've, you know, used them for operating as well as some capital costs. And so it's just managing what the amounts we believe will be coming into the fund and the projects available for them.
All right. I mean, but we don't typically spend it all in the year in which they come in?
Correct. Correct. And there's been an influx of, of funds in the past, recent years with the Rebuild Illinois Bond Funds that we've been using to do some capital projects as well. So that has helped the fund.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? And the motor fuel tax fund, moving on to the stormwater fund on page 29.5, section five, page 29. Okay, I'll ask a question. 8014. Is there a reason we were so, are under budget and our expenditure under storm sewers? I mean, I'm not saying there's anything out of the ordinary. I just don't understand the.
Current budget?
Yeah. Is this deferred?
What was deferred?
Because I don't see it rolling forward into '23.
Okay. There was, there was a, basically a deferral from storm sewer lining that was budgeted, will, is proposed to be budgeted for next year. That was, was not done in 2022.
But it's been deferred into a different line? Because the, but the, the projected 2023 is only 150,000.
Okay.
Or we could circle back if you like.
No, we'll give you the answer.
Oh, that's even better.
So originally in 2022, there was a suite of projects that we had in the budget, and some of those are getting deferred into later years. So an example would be the Bryn Haven subdivision stormwater project, the Crestview Area Stormwater Project. There were some in that line item that, when reviewing the forecast of the funds, those were pushed out into later years. So if you look in the CEB for the stormwater fund, you'll see where those programs were prioritized. They were based in accordance with the, the stormwater funding that we've looked at this year, as well as the, the work that the Public Works Committee has done in, in reviewing the prioritization of stormwater projects.
All right. I'll look at that. Thank you. Anything else? Alderman Dunn.
I just want to add, remind council that the city's conducting a stormwater fee study currently, which would be an additional element of funding this fund for additional projects. As you can see on page 530, the bottom right corner, we go significantly negative there, 2024, at the end of the year. And that's, the focus of the stormwater fee is to reverse that.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn.
Or whatever the decision is on that funding.
City Treasurer.
Should also be able to explain perhaps in 530, the transfer in large amounts in 2023?
So the transfer in on 5-30, 4.75 billion. That's made up of a couple things. One, the majority of it is ARPA dollars. So we committed a large amount of ARPA dollars for the storm station project. So those dollars will be moved out of the, the general fund, which is where they currently sit, to the stormwater fund to pay for that project, namely McKinley, which will start probably late 2023, and then move into 2024, as, as Stan talked about earlier. The other part of that is there is the continued $1.8 million transfer from the general fund, just to provide some funding for the stormwater fund and help to repay the debt service.
Okay. Let's move on to municipal utility fund, section four, page one. Municipal utility fund, 4-1. Yeah. Chapter four, page one. Admittedly, I'm trying, let's see. Yeah. Is, I was looking at the wages and the, the salaries have gone up, the contractual services. I guess, I would draw the question. Any questions? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. I'm on 4-2, line item, oh, the, the capital line item. Just trying to reconcile in my head how that increased, you know, roughly $19 million year over year. What, what makes up that delta?
Which, which line?
4-2, under expenditures, capital.
Yeah. The capital, the capital line?
Yeah.
And the, the increase from 12.7 million this year to 31.8?
Correct, yeah.
I believe the reason for that is what's in there is bundle five for 2023. That's, that's a big reason for that jump.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Curious about these depreciate, depreciation line items on 4-2. Almost looks like, and I know this isn't happening, but there are positive numbers in the other financing sources. It almost seems like it's also up top and being added back, but I don't think that's the case, right?
So the way that we've typically budgeted for depreciation is it is up top in the expenditures line item. And then what we do to get it kind of to what I would call this budget basis, we add it back in, right? Because it's not really cash out the door. It's a, it's a depreciable, it's a, it's a paper expense, for lack of a better term for it. So we add it back in. So you get a true basis for, you know, cash that would go out the door for the, that MUF fund. So you can really see what the performance for the fund was absent that number.
Okay. So if I wanted to look at excess revenues over expenditures on like a cash basis, I'd take that 33 million and add the.
Correct. So that 183,900 is a reduction basically of cash for the MUF fund. That gets you to what that exact number would be.
I love it when you financial people talk. All right. Other questions? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to parking system fund, chapter four, page 28. Well, I'll ask a question. You know, I'm trying to figure out, so we, this includes revenues from our parking, commuter parking? Is that correct? So I don't know what, and I don't, and we might have to circle back. I meant to pull my budget book from last year, but I don't know what the revenue was in 2019 in terms of charge for services on 429. Is that, is that charge for services the line that would include what people are parking to park in commuter spaces?
Yeah. So if you turn to page four. Yeah. So if you turn to page 431, that gives the detail of what the charges for services was by type of permit.
All right. So I was looking, I don't know what, I mean, how far off, I know 2020 may have been the same as 2019. I don't know how many people came in and asked for refunds on stickers, but is this went down in 2021? It seems like our garages are pretty empty yet. It doesn't look like we've really taken, I guess we had $100,000 revenue. Is that the, all related to commuter parking or are there other reduced parking?
So the 2023 budget assumes that we will hit 50% of pre-pandemic parking levels. So 2021 hit its lowest level at 36% of pre-pandemic. So that would be your 2019 number. 2022, we're set to hit 47% of pre-pandemic levels of our revenues.
Right. And so where are we pulling the money from? And I thought I saw it in here to cover all the expenses that aren't getting met by the revenue that has been decreased for the last three years.
So the General Fund has been supporting the Parking Fund to make up that difference. And we do have this year a transfer in from the General Fund to make the Parking Fund whole. So you will see on page 4-29, there's a $447,715 transfer in from the General Fund. That's right in the middle of page 449, 4-29. $200,000 of that is an ARPA grant for some maintenance at one of the parking decks. The remainder, the 247, 715, is basically what is needed from the General Fund to make the Parking Fund whole just for 2023. This would not include recovering amounts from previous years.
Okay. So it looks like, so the 2019 number must have been far greater than 522,000. So it looks like we're continuing to subsidize the parking with the General Fund.
The charges for services for 2019 was 900, just over $905,000 in permit costs, or permit revenues, excuse me.
All right. I mean, I think we, I suggested before, we might need to look at other ways to get rental from those spaces that are in the garages that we're not using because it doesn't look like over the next two years that we're going to get even 50%. Well, we'll get at 50% of where we're supposed to be, but I'm not going to ask for a circle back, but thank you for the explanation. Alderman Palmsky, then Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the salaries and wages. I know in March of 2021, the council approved a parking ALPR camera. So to allow for parking enforcement without having staff get out of their car. And I anticipated that we would be spending less on staff, but I see that there's a jump from 104,000 to 160,000. And I'm wondering if we can have an explanation as to why the increase and also how has the ALPR benefited us? And how has that contributed to our enforcement?
So that's, what you're looking at with 160,000 is a spread of salaries as we do for a number of the budgets that would involve some finance staff, some administration staff. So it's not directly related to any one person. I think that's where you're, what you're asking. We are using the camera system. And we are down to one parking person. We had two positions, if you recall, pre-pandemic, and now we have one. So it's working out.
Follow up, please. Along the same lines, so with that 135,624, is that, you know, this report from March of 2021 states that there were two parking staff persons and that one was vacant? Like, does this 135, from the 2020 actual expenditure, was that? I'm just curious to see how this does play out with, you know, going down one entire staff person, but still seeing that overall increase.
I think we'll have to get back to you on that one, Alderman.
Thank you.
Alderman Jensen?
Thank you, Mayor. This is on page 4-34, item 50-14. You just pulled parking deck maintenance. If I'm reading this correctly in the CEB, that includes a parking garage counter system? Is that accurate?
Did you say 4-34?
Just see if I, there's a parking garage counter system for 235,000 in 2024, which I think backs out of that 2024 number for, on page 4-34, line 50-14. Is that what?
That is not in the budget. It's in the CEB, but it is not in the budget.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Has that been deferred or killed or?
Deferred, I would say. It was an idea we had in 2018.
Got it. Nice to have it.
We did install one in the Larch Deck.
Right.
And we were working towards Addison and others. The Larch Deck, we started with the Larch Deck because it was all commuter parking and it was very simple to do the in and out count. So we were looking at that, but then, of course, the bottom fell out on parking, so we'll defer that.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanquist?
Thank you, Mayor. So to our conversation, I noticed the fines and penalties have almost going to triple from 2020 to 2024.
What line are you on, Alderman?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm back on 429 at the top under revenues. We've got charges for services and then grant revenue and fines and penalties. So I was just curious what's making that up and how are we coming up with these numbers, especially when parking is going down?
So I think part of that is a product of COVID and the 2020 and the 2021 numbers are a little unusually low. So if you could look back to, you know, even years before that, you know, 20, you know, we're closer to $200,000. So I think 2020 is unusually low. 2021, 2022 are getting back up to more usual levels, but still with COVID and not as many people parking in the garages and you aren't getting as many fines as you would with a full parking system.
So if we're budgeting 276 and 290, but we're still only going to be at 50%, does that marry together? Are we increasing fines or?
So this doesn't anticipate increasing like the fine levels at this point. It's just increasing the usage, basically, and considering that as people return to the ecosystem, that those would also increase.
Okay. So that could be an area of revenue generation too, not that I like assigning fines to people. Very annoying.
We'll start finding people in their driveways to get revenues up.
But it doesn't include regular parking tickets on residential streets, right? This is only for the parking garages?
I believe this would include all parking fines that would be received, would go in citywide, I guess.
Oh, okay. I thought it was tied to, okay. That helps me. Thank you.
Not so in favor of it now, are you?
Yeah.
Let's check his, make a circle back to check for his city sticker. Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think this has to, maybe you can just answer this here. I'm very ignorant about the parking decks. I don't know, how do, Alderman Jensen mentioned accounting system, what we didn't put in. So how do we track usage in those parking decks? Is it permits? Is it? How is that done?
It's a combination of permits that people pull or daily parking. And then we have the enforcement vehicle that drives through to match up the license plates with the permit or the daily. And the counter that we put in was born out of frustration somewhat in that people, we were getting feedback from people that they would drive to the top of the parking deck and not be able to find a spot and then have to come down and get to the next deck so that they, and try to make the train downtown. So we installed one and we're looking at others, but it's not necessary right now.
Okay. And then, and then a follow-up question for that. So we, do we track that data in any way just to look at like raw usage over time? I mean, I know that COVID would skew those numbers, but like going back, I mean, I just hear so much about parking deck utilization. I just wonder if we actually have that information?
We do keep data on our parking from everything that we can gather, even when we were driving them and looking at, you know, with hand-counting cars and looking at for permits. So we do have data dating back some time, yes.
I mean, just to see the trend would be interesting. I don't know if I want to use a circle back on that. I feel like I get so many circle backs, but it would be interesting to know.
We're happy to make an appointment. You can come in and take a look at that and talk about it.
All right. Parking system, last call. City Treasurer?
Just, I did a favor for Alderman Hanquist here. I looked back at some of the fine numbers real quick. 2017, 209,000 in fines, just five years ago. It seems to not be very, it's fluctuating, but in 2017, 2,009K.
Alderman Toledo?
We had a discussion at Finance Committee tonight about the 2013 debt service for the parking decks that's rolling off. And I think, I don't know if the budget, it's either something to do with the taxes collected and paid in different years or one of the schedules is wrong. I think it's probably the former. But just for our peace of mind on the Finance Committee, it's the line item 9028 and 9056 on 4-34, where that's the 2013 debt service, the two lines. And it totals to around that 600,000 that we were talking about in our meeting. But it says that we still have to pay it in 2023, whereas we were talking about it rolling off in 2022. So...
Alderman Toledo, could you give me the line numbers again on the page?
Yeah. The page is 4-34 and the line numbers are under debt service. It's the two 2013 line items. So it's 28 and 56.
Thank you.
Let us take a look at that and get back to you. I think it might be a timing variance, but let us confirm that.
Thank you.
All right. Last call, Parking System Fund, Anti-Capital Improvement Funds, page 2-77. I have a question on 279. What's the source of the rental income on line 13-00? Is that actual rental of real property?
That is the 180 Park Building.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Administration, Elected Officials, page 20, and Chapter 2. Pardon me?
We're going to give Stan the backseat here.
Thank you, Stan. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I feel like we should put an elected official down there. Noel, do you want to go? Are you ready to proceed, City Manager?
One minute here.
Sure.
I honestly didn't expect we'd get there tonight.
Well, here we are.
I'm pleased that we are. Thank you. So this account does cover some of the administrative costs in our office and then all of, of course, the city council's wages and then some other items that are on there, including on page 2-21 and under, let's see, the newsletter, of course, that's... Okay, that's under public information now. It's why it's out of there. But, oh, public information programming, I'm sorry, that is the front porch, which we noted that are up 20% cost due to just the rise of inflation. But as we know from the citywide survey, it is still one of the most popular forms of information for residents. Couple other notes. The under 60-98 other expenses, that includes the Commissioner Appreciation Event. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Deuter?
Thank you. The J form for 60-45 on page 2-22 talks about part of that increase is a guide to city services book. Is that something that's new? I guess is the first part of my question.
Mike, did we do that before? Yeah, this would be the second edition, second edition from when Cassandra put that together.
Okay. And can you describe what is in it? What's? I'm just, part of my question is related to the usefulness of a actual book. And, you know, I think most people are getting used to looking on the internet and I'm just wondering who the audience is.
And that goes, I mean, I know that the Chamber of Commerce does the welcome bag. So every new resident Almhurst gets it. If it goes to, we have racks in different hotels throughout the Chicagoland area. Some of that goes in there also. It's also digital also on the website. You can find it digitally also. But this will just be updating it and for printing of it.
Is it talking about restaurants in town or truly just city services?
Truly city services.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Hanquist?
One quick question. Are overinflated salaries part-time or full-time? It's okay.
You want to circle back on that or you're good? All right. All right. Administration, Elected Officials, other questions? We'll move on to Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, page 24.
I'll go ahead and take it then.
Police and Fire Commission, that's, the liaison from that is the HR Department is the liaison to that commission. Just a couple of line items in here. You'll see some, it's really not gone up, but it's still a high cost. It's professional services. That's for polygraphs and psychological exams we do for the police and firefighters when they're hired. And just the number of... And, uh, just the, the number of, of applicants that we've run through the process. Um, I know that recently there has not been, um, a big pool of applicants coming in, but still any, any we get, we, we, we run them through, uh, the polygraph and then a psychological exam is part of the process. And then the personal accrue, personnel recruitment, uh, is, is up quite a bit this, last year and then moving forward, uh, due to just the difficulties of trying to get applicants to come and take the test. And I know both the Police and Fire have struggled with that and we've done a lot more, uh, as far as advertising. In fact, last time for the police recruitment and we did a video, we did quite a few things to try to, uh, get our numbers up, which they, they were up comparatively to other municipalities that we've talked to, but they were down, you know, in the big picture from what we used to get in the past.
All right, open it up to the council. All right, move on to Finance, page twenty-five.
All right, good evening. I am very happy to be before you tonight to talk about my first Finance Department budget with the city. Um, but before I go into the twenty twenty-three budget, I'd just like to talk for a few minutes, um, about some of the achievements that we have done, um, in twenty twenty-two. So we have continued to receive the certificate of achievement for both the award in financial reporting and in, uh, budget from the Government Finance Officers Association. Um, we've also completed, um, several prominent financial analysis projects, including the stormwater funding, um, financing for bundle five, um, and MUF rates, just to name a few. But I'm really going to spend a few minutes talking about the biggest project that our department and really a lot of other staff in the city has been working on in twenty twenty-two, and that is the implementation of our new ERP system. Um, the ERP system is the, something that the city started back in twenty twenty-one in selecting Tyler Technologies, um, to provide a new, um, software system for the city. Um, we began implementation of the first module in April of this year with a target go-live date of January. And I'm, I'm very proud to say we are on target to hit that January deadline. Um, it's been a very aggressive process. I have to thank everyone that's sitting in this room, all of the city staff and everyone in the Finance Department for, um, many days and weeks and months, um, working on this implementation. Um, so just to give you an idea of the components that are going live in January, they are the general ledger, our accounts receivable, our general billing, cashiering, purchasing, accounts payable, purchasing cards, project accounting, contracts and budget. Um, the goal and the result of this project will be a stronger system of internal controls for the city, better access to information, um, to automate some more of our manual processes and to make, um, the city more efficient and to make our processes more efficient. And I think we're all really excited, um, to get this project completed. Um, as a teaser for next year's budget, um, so you'll want to be here next year, is the budget process will be done in the new, um, software system. Um, so while many things will stay the same and will look the same, there will be a, a bit of a different look and feel to the budget for next year, so stick around for next year. Again, I can't thank, um, everyone that's worked on this project enough. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we will also continue to work towards, um, implementation of the EnterGov platform. That is the platform that supports community development in our licensing projects. And we will also in twenty twenty-three start the human capital management process, which will, um, implement the, um, HR and payroll functions in this new ERP system. And then lastly, we will begin the utility billing project, which will go live sometime in twenty twenty-four. So really a long project for, for the city, but a great project that we're working on. And, um, I think it will bring a lot of, um, benefits, um, to the city. And well, I should say, while this is a Finance Department project, um, we are working on this in collaboration with IT and it's actually budgeted for in the IT department. So we'll talk about the numbers and the dollars and sense of that when we look at the IT department. Um, when we look at the Finance Department for twenty twenty-three, um, we really maintain the same level of service from twenty twenty-two into twenty twenty-three. There's two items of note, um, that, um, bear talking about. One is you will notice, um, a shift, um, from, um, consultant or contractual services. Um, the Finance Director and Assistant Financial Director positions were budgeted last year in, um, in consultant fees and are moved back up into wages. Um, the other item to talk about is credit card fees. Um, you'll notice that is an item that is trending high for, um, twenty twenty-two estimated. Uh, we have lowered that number going into twenty twenty-three and we continue to look for ways to, um, reduce our credit card fees that we bear for the transactional costs that the city has. I do have some good news since we looked at this budget. I have been talking with our current credit card provider and I have, um, been able to negotiate a decrease of about a hundred thousand dollars annually, um, in our credit card fees. So that's, that's a benefit that we got there. Um, we also will continue to reduce credit card fees as we go into the new MUNUS ERP system. So we will be, as part of that system, we will be utilizing Tyler Payments, um, which does have, um, reduced fees when we compare with what we are currently paying. So we hope to continue to drive that number downwards. Um, we will keep working on that as we know that is a, an expensive area in the Finance Department budget. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So quite impressive, actually. Uh, so, so you're saying that in nine months, you kicked off a project and you'll go live on a new ERP system?
Yes.
It's a lot of change.
Yes.
So congratulations. Oh, I'm super.
Yes, I know, yes.
Yeah, yeah. But, but that's, that's very impressive. Nice work to you and staff.
Professionally speaking. Other questions? Ah, City Treasurer.
So my favorite topic, of course, audits. Any expectation of audit fees to increase?
So we are still under contract for one more year for the audit, so where there is potential for them to increase would be in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
On the subject of credit card fees, are we tied to an existing contract that might overlap with the Tyler credit card processing?
So there's a couple, um, parts of that. So with, the city did enter into a contract with Paymentis, um, which was a credit card provider, which we were trying to use to drive the, the credit card fees down. And we do currently utilize that provider for our DACRA, our parking ticket. So they are provider we already use. We have not yet implemented that change to Paymentis, um, just with, um, trying to get someone from our current software to work on that implementation as well as some changes in staffing. That, that's something that just had not gotten off the ground yet. So we are working to, um, move to the Tyler Payments. Paymentis is not an option with our current, our new ERP system, so that's not even an option that we have. So we're working to work, talk with them and, and, um, you know, we will still be using them as a provider.
For DACRA?
Yes, for DACRA.
All right, thank you. Alderman Toledo.
Yeah, just on the same credit card thing, um, I, you know, I think the Finance Committee is aware, maybe not the rest of the council, that a lot of the recommendations from the report that was passed a year ago or so, um, have been implemented partly because of the software issues and the, the contract company. But what about the, um, I thought one of the recommendations was to limit the amount, like, so that, because a lot of it was coming from big, like a seven thousand dollar building permit fee put on, you know, American Airlines credit card. Did we, were we able to implement that and if not, why?
So part, the piece to implement that was to go to the new credit card company, the Paymentis company, because they were the ones that had the functionality that could limit that amount online. And so with not being able to move to that new company, we weren't able to take, to leverage that functionality, but that's something that we hope as we go to the new system that we would be able to leverage.
I see. Thank you.
Good question. Other questions for Finance Director? All right. Thank you. Good job. Uh, Legal?
This is page two dash sixty-eight and this covers the, um, the basic three, um, even though it's four lines, three different, um, ways we approach, um, legal fees. DUI prosecutions is, um, our prosecutor, uh, that is not Storino, Romello and Durkin. Our Labor Council and our legal fees and additional counsel are Storino, Romello and Durkin and the prosecuting attorney is, um, same as DUI prosecutions. Finance Committee has been talking about legal fees and we've examined that. We've dove pretty deep, as Mayor knows, into, um, those costs. We had, uh, the last two years, we had a couple, we, we've had, um, issues that we've had to work through, whether they're, uh, labor or prosecution or, um, lawsuits that have spiked our, uh, legal fees. We hope to bring those down, um, through working with, uh, Storino's firm to decrease those into the future. And, um, Chairman, did the report go through tonight? So that'll be on next Monday's council meeting?
Yes, uh, the Finance Committee did, uh, come to an agreement on a report regarding recommendations. Uh, we, you know, looked at maybe alternate, bringing that in-house. It was not a compelling argument for that, but we do have some recommendations from the committee on how to improve the process and, and maybe reduce the cost, um, of, of that particular line item, yeah.
Questions? All right, we'll move to Claims. Should be an easy one. Sixty-nine.
So two dash sixty-nine is the, the claims and liability expense for the city. Um, we do not yet have our rates, um, for twenty twenty-three yet, so typically what we do for the budget is, is just an average because it's a, um, a combination of what our insurance rates would be as well as any claims experience that the city might experience.
So is this, uh, our insurance premiums as well as our self-insured?
Correct.
All right. Questions on Claims? Alderman Jensen, then Alderman Dunn.
Thank you. Um, just, can you explain how the auto liability piece, there's like twenty grand in twenty twenty, down to two thousand, budget for fifty this year, but it's going to be five and just projected five for the next few years?
So it's really driven on what our experience is because our, our deductibles are larger for our auto liability. So it just really depends on years where we have claims and what the, there would be. So there's, there's great fluctuation in them. So we do just try to kind of look at what an average amount would be over a timeframe and that's what we plug into the budget.
Is there a reason there was fifty grand, uh, budgeted this year?
It was probably based off of what the, the prior, you know, if you looked at the prior five-year experience, in that would be pulling in a larger claim.
Alderman Dunn.
Uh, you, you mentioned, uh, the deductible, Christina. The, um, uh, does, where does that show up? Uh, do we budget for paying that, uh, somewhere?
So the deductible would just be if there would be an, an expense where we would only pay up to that amount. So it's really factored into what the claims amounts that we would pay would be. You know, if it was, um, you know, an auto accident and we had to pay up to the twenty five thousand dollar deductible, you know, that's what we would pay. And then after that, the insurance would kick in. If the cost to repair the vehicle was less than twenty-five thousand, then we would just pay what that actual cost would be.
All right, other questions on Claims? All right. I think we'll do one more.
Yeah.
And we'll meet the deadline. All right.
Great.
Uh, Human Services.
Uh, Human Services, which is page two dash seventy. Uh, this is, um, a lot of senior programs. The sixty dash zero-six is the DuPage Senior Counsel. Um, they recently put in a request that I believe Public Affairs and Safety looked at tonight, uh, for the forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, there was a, uh, there was no request made in twenty twenty-one and, uh, we, I believe the, um, estimated actual for twenty twenty-two is thirty-two thousand dollars. Sixty dash forty-eight is the Metropolitan Family Services, annual cost of sixty-seven thousand dollars. And that is the program that we worked with the Park District, with the IGA, to move that to the Centennial Senior Center. And, uh, I believe everybody heard, well, I, I'm sorry, uh, those who were able to attend the night that we got together with the Park District and the School District, uh, the Park District put in for an award for that and we won collectively, uh, that IGA and that program that we have together. And then sixty forty-nine is the PACE program, uh, where there was a J form for the, uh, increase. That's the Senior Taxi Subsidy Program. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions? All right, I think we're right, ten o'clock on the button. We accomplished quite a bit tonight. Any closing comments we need? Are we ready to call it a night?
No closing comments.
All right, motion to adjourn, please. Alderman Mulliner, second Alderman Dunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
Thank you for your attention.